It's Monday, March 4th. I'm following the meeting of the Brainerd City Council's order. Tony, can you call the roll?
Yeah. Stingline?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Chesak?
Here.
O'Day?
Here.
Stunick?
Here.
Terry?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Bede?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve or any additions? Ms. O'Day? Chairman O'Day? Hang on one sec. Going down there? Chairman O'Day?
I have an addition, a recommendation from the Brainerd Public Utilities Commission to delay the alley project that we spoke of last week between 6th and 7th.
Okay. Will, is that going to, you want that on SPW or do you want it under?
I would like it under old business.
Old business. Okay. We don't think we have old business, so it's going to go?
Under unfinished.
Unf-. We don't have that.
Yeah, we do.
Where is that?
Call for applicants.
Unfinished business seven, so we'll have it seven C. The alley project off of? Approve. Okay. So we've got a motion to approve the amended agenda by Chesak. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson. Good to see you here, Mr. Stunick. And up. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Items five is the consent calendar. This is a notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Chesak. Second by Terry. Any discussion? Hearing none. Tony, can you call the roll?
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes. The consent calendar is adopted. Item six is council committee reports. Six A, Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just had two items on safety and public works tonight. First item was a discussion on proposed sidewalk for Willow Street, Sixth to Seventh Street, the roundabout for next year's project. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend sidewalk from Sixth to Seventh just on the north side of Willow, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
I'll just explain. Staff had actually proposed on the south side. There was less dirt work to do, but there was a three-phase electrical box. North side has a little bit more of a slope, and there are some driveways that come closer to proximity, so there will be some bit of a obstacle there. But, and then there's a power pole on that side that would need to be moved. We did have some representatives from BPU here, and they said the pole would be much cheaper to move than the box that's on the south. And it was my recommendation because there's more foot traffic going to Speedway on the north side that we would just stick with the north side and save ourselves $25,000 to $35,000 on the south side, which is unnecessary and repetitive.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any further discussion?
Bevins?
Mr. Chesak?
I thought of something I wanted to ask about, and there's a sidewalk about halfway, I believe, now. Is that correct on the north side? If I ask the staff?
Yeah. Mr. Dean?
Yes, sir. The sidewalk existing is on the north side halfway.
Will that get replaced as well in this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last item was just a direction on active code enforcement cases. We just had one case at 804 19th Street Southeast. This was for junk and debris. Motion coming out of committee was to follow staff recommendation to obtain a search warrant and abate the junk and debris, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Chesak. Any discussion? Mr. Chair?
The discussion is in the picture. That's, that's all.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is six B, Personal and Finance Committee Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have six items, first of which is paid-on-call firefighter hiring for 2024. The motion is to approve the establishment of a paid-on-call firefighter hiring list and to authorize hiring up to four paid-on-call firefighters, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Chairman Johnson?
We like to have 40 paid-on-call staff. We're at 36 right now, and we're anticipating maybe a couple retirements this year, so we're going to hire four and try and get it back up to 40 here.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thanks. The next up is approve a library capital projects and request funds from Kichigami Regional Library Reserve Fund. Motion is to authorize the approval of Brainerd Public Library Board projects requesting $100,623.20 in funds from the Kichigami Regional Library Reserve Funds designated for the Brainerd Public Library, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Terry. Chairman Johnson?
This is that fund Kichigami set up a few years ago when they had a couple million dollars in excess fund balance or something like that, and they set up the capital projects fund, and the library has used it a couple times. They're just asking to get $100,000 back now to do some HVAC work.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Bevins?
Chair, Mr. Chesak?
I'm not sure of maybe liaison Terry could answer this, but I think at the PNF meeting it was indicated there were a number of bids, and I think there's only one. Were there more than one?
There were two.
Okay. I assume this is the lowest, or?
Um, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is we had a request to use the City of Brainerd logo for the Water Tower Committee merch fundraising, and the motion is to approve use of the city logo to this group to assist with saving the historic water tower.
We have a motion by Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunick. Any discussion?
President Bevins?
We'll go Chairman Johnson first, then Mr. Chesak.
It's pretty self-explanatory. The Water Tower Committee wants to use the logo. They're asking us. The motion is to say yes.
Mr. Chesak?
I just kind of maybe have a concern here, only to the degree if we, as a council, being that, should we not make sure we get a look at the items before they put a logo on it in case there's something we wouldn't necessarily want to see our logo on? Not that I'm suggesting they would do that. I all seem to be pretty reasonable people. Just by the chance there's something we wouldn't approve of them putting a logo on. Just is that something we could ask for?
Thank you.
Or of a?
It's not part of the motion, but sure.
I mean, can I ask that that be part of the motion?
Um. You could move to amend the motion.
You could move to amend the motion. Can I ask you to hang on to that for one second? I'm going to let the, I'm going to let the mayor speak, and then I'll turn it back to you. I, I promise.
Yeah. As a member of that committee, I would gladly represent the city in that matter if you would be willing, just making sure that there's no issue with anything that shows up. And if there is, I will gladly bring that before the council before any decision would be made.
Mr. Chesak?
Well, if the mayor's the sole advisor on that, I definitely think we should do it.
You're probably right.
No, I'm good with that. I, I trust the mayor can be our good representative there.
Okay.
I, I would.
I think it should be part of the motion. Please.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we amended to include the council review, the items that they were going to plan to put the logo on prior to them doing that.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there a discussion on the amendment, Mr. Johnson?
I have discussion. I'll support it, but I don't know if it really requires council review. I think we could have administrative, have staff administratively review it, and just if it's obscene, deny it. If it's not, allow it. But the motion is for council to review it, and I, I support it.
Okay. Any?
Could I, could I just, in a discussion?
Mr. O'Day?
Just put it in the consent calendar, and then if somebody, if somebody has a problem with it, as they look through the consent calendar, they can bring it up.
Mr. Chesak, you okay? Mr. Johnson, you okay? Mr. Stunick?
Yep. All good.
All right. Any further discussion? On the water tower logo, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Good job, guys.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yep?
We, that was on the amendment? We have to vote on the underlying?
Right on. So now the motion's been amended. Is there any more discussion on the amended motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Not quite as good a job, but almost. Next up is item four. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's the fire contract formula for 2025. Informational. So they, Connie did the calculations, and they presented to the fire advisory board of the levies that will be levying next year for fire service. And it's all in the memo if you have any questions, but just of note, Brainerd's cost change.
Any comments on the fire?
It's going to be $22,000.
I have a question.
Mr. Chesak?
Were there any townships or participants that were unhappy or expressed a concern about the increase? That anybody can answer?
Connie or Tim or?
Kara.
Kara? Yeah. Kara. Kara's got this.
I do. No concerns, and as a matter of fact, all the board members were very impressed by Connie's financial wizardry and the clarity in which she laid out all of the expenses. So no arguments or disagreements there.
Wizardry?
Wizardry.
So if there's toothpaste, it needs to go back into the tube?
Call Connie.
She's got a wand.
She can do it.
In her purse.
Right on. Does that answer your question, Mr. Chesak?
I think it does, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will move on.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is an update on the public utilities director hiring process. As of our meeting, they had not completed all of the interviews, so if you would, Mr. President, let Chris give the council an update.
Chris, anything you'd like to update us on the public utilities director hiring?
Yes, thank you. So since we did our interviews, we have actually received two more additional applications. So the work group is meeting tomorrow, and we will be reviewing those applications. We plan to make a recommendation at the March 18th council meeting.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
I have a question or a comment. At the PNF meeting, actually before the meeting actually was open, there was this short discussion about the applicants for this position, and it was stated that a question seemed to be asked by Alderman Stunick to, the person on the team to interview, council member Terry, what do you think of the other two applicants? And she said she wasn't sure. And then Chair Johnson said, I like them both. And the question was asked, do you know who they are? And the response was, I know who they aren't. That seems to be that this process could be perhaps tainted based on that comment. There's no place for that. It's a discussion on an agenda item before the meeting began, and we have to monitor ourselves, folks. This doesn't do any good when, if you look at the number of views on that PNF committee, it's extraordinary. That tells me a lot of eyes have been on this, and I think I know why. I think we need to tone our comments, not label people, not disparage people. There's no place for it. It's nonproductive, and it's frankly tiring. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any further comments on the public utilities director hiring process? All right. Hearing none, please proceed.
All right. Last item on our agenda is to approve a memorandum of agreement between the city and IBEW Local Number 31 Administrative Support Union setting the 2024 wage for the ER SST position or whatever the acronym is, and I so move.
You have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Chairman Johnson?
This is the joint position we budgeted that is 50% us, 50% Baxter that we've been trying to get the union to agree to for solid five, five months or so now. So it's, it's good to be able to finally start this hiring process.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is just a memorandum of understanding, so all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Any, please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you. Item seven is unfinished business. Seven A is call for applicants. We'll start with Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, President. The following applications are available on our website. We have terms available for the charter commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025, park and rec, one term expiring 2029, TAC, three terms expiring 2026. We also have one term on the EDA expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as council president, I have two terms to, on the parking commission. One expires in 2026, the other expires in 2028. And what is more fun than complaining about parking? Next up is item seven B, a final reading of proposed ordinance 1564, replacement of the city code 700. And this is, Mr. Dean, you have anything you'd like to add on this one?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is mostly the same ordinance as per the first reading that was held on February 5th. As referenced in the item, there are two definitions that are included in the proposed ordinance that were not included in the first reading. However, the addition of the two definitions do not significantly affect the substance of the ordinance. So staff is recommending conducting the final reading of proposed ordinance 1564, holding the public hearing followed by adoption of the proposed ordinance. As a reminder, due to the length being over 30 pages long and changes throughout, staff is recommending a summary ordinance requiring unanimous adoption by the council. And Todd Wicklund from BPU is also here if there's additional questions regarding the ordinance as well.
Well, let's see. Any questions of staff? Either our staff or the public utility staff?
President Bevins?
Mr. Chesak?
I believe it's a summary ordinance that you provided, two pager. And at the bottom, I, I've kind of seen this on other things, if I'm not mistaken. It's very short. It says, notice is hereby given that a printed copy of the whole, uh, oh, I'm having troubles here. The whole ordinance is available for inspection by anyone during the city's regular office hours or on the city's website. My question is, based on that language, if somebody comes into city hall and asks for that ordinance that's say 428P on a given weekday, do we just hand it to them and say goodbye, or are they regulated to sit there and read it or observe, you know? Is this a data practice thing, or is it automatically handed over? That's my question. Maybe our attorney could answer that. It's kind of.
I don't know. If anybody can staff answer Mr. Chesak's question?
We would allow them to review it as necessary. Even at 428, we'll, we'll stick around to help them out.
Okay. That's all I wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Okay. So the first, the first action would be we are looking for a motion to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance 1564, an ordinance replacing section 700 of the city code. And we always want to note that a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous. Motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Any discussion on the final reading? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That passes unanimously. We don't have to read all 30 pages. Next up, it is 747, and I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody in the audience or online that wishes to come forward and speak towards ordinance 1564. If you're online, hit star three, and we'll note that you, that you wish to speak, and then star six will unmute you. But star three gets you, is like raising your hand. In the audience, I'll ask a second time if there's anybody who wishes to speak on ordinance And I'll ask a final time. And I will close the public hearing on 1564 at 748, and look for a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 1564.
So move.
Motion by Stunick is our second by Johnson. Any discussion on the adoption? Hearing none. Tony, can you call the roll?
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes. That ordinance is adopted. Next up is eight, oh, I'm sorry, seven C, the alley. Mr. O'Day?
Sure.
Do you want to take this?
Yeah, sure. I can start it and then probably hand it off to Mr. Dean. So this is a meeting that we had earlier tonight called by the BPU Commission and liaison Chesak regarding the alley project that we authorized going out for bid two weeks ago. And BPU Commission had some concerns. They had, they had motion to put out for bid as well. So there was some miscommunication, I think, between the city and, or city staff and BPU staff and city council and their commission where we've talked about improving that. We continued that talk tonight. We had a good discussion on some of the concerns from both sides. I think the city's perspective is, from the engineering perspective, is, is that we could save money on getting it done this year. We had the petition just for the, the alley. We had the request from BPU to do the water along with the alley. We don't want to do the alley twice, so discussion continued. It came to a motion, and it wasn't a motion from SBW, it was a motion from the BPU Commission to request that the city council delays this project for one year, and I'll just motion that forward. I don't, I don't know if I have to put that forward as a recommendation. I think that is the point of discussion tonight. So through our, our discussion, we can hand it over to staff. We do have some BPU staff. We have obviously our staff, and we do have, I believe, just one member of the commission here still. So any, any questions, concerns can go from there, but that is the recommendation. It's coming from BPU Commission to delay this, this alley project for one year to figure it out, make sure everything is done right. And there are some legitimate concerns from that, and I'll let them expand on that as we discuss.
It actually seems pretty simple, but I sat here through it. I don't mean to.
It was simple for you to sit there, for sure.
I didn't have any problems sitting here. Mr. Dean, anything you want to add to Mr. O'Day's synopsis?
No, sir.
Mr. Wicklund, anything that we missed? Okay. Mr. O'Day, can you care to make the motion?
The motion for?
A motion.
A motion?
A motion.
If you want me to.
I would. You are the man.
Motion would be to delay the alley projects until 2025. I so move.
Second.
See? That wasn't hard. Motion by O'Day, second by Chesak. Now we got something to talk about. Mr. Johnson?
I'm going to vote no. This is just dropped on my lap right now. It was never emailed out ahead of time. It wasn't put on the agenda, which usually when we talk about things at council meetings, we put them on an agenda, which is published Thursday afternoon. The public can consume what we're going to talk about when we're conducting the public's business, and then we talk about it in public at a council meeting. This doesn't pass the sniff test. This just seems to be dropped on our lap and hurry up, make this decision without having any information except for if some people have opinions somewhere. I'm voting no. Not that I don't, not that I may not, I might support a delay, but the process with how this is done is unethical, in my opinion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Chair, O'Day?
Just as a response, I was, I was notified of this meeting on Friday, towards the end of the day, and told that this would be made into a public notice, and it was. It did follow that. But it was, you're correct. It was not on our agenda. We just added that right now. You guys weren't given all that information, so I totally understand if you don't want to go with a motion tonight. One thing I thought of that maybe should have been brought up during that meeting is we, we both did put this up for bid. We don't know what those bids are yet. We could continue to hear back on those bids. We don't have to accept a bid. They don't have to accept any bids, but then we would still know what the cost is, and we could, we could decide whether we want to delay it at that time. We could do it tonight. It's really up to you guys. That's why I wanted to bring this to council.
President Bevins?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to turn this to Mr. Johnson, back to Mr. Johnson, because I?
Yep. That's fine.
And then you can be next.
I just want to respond to the response. If the commission voted, they met on Tuesday. If they voted on it Tuesday morning, they had all day Tuesday, all day Wednesday, darn near all day Thursday to put it on a proper city, city council agenda. I don't know who didn't do that or why they didn't, but it should have been done. And this isn't, this isn't how we operate in the city of Brainerd.
Thank you. Mr. Chesek?
Yeah, they called a special meeting on safety and public works. That was taking place, but the, I think the plans, and maybe Mr. Dean, maybe I'm incorrect, but I understand the plans have not been completed yet, so it hasn't gone out for bids. Would that be correct, Mr. Dean?
That is correct.
Okay. So, and if need be, I'd be happy to put this on next month's agenda, but I would ask that we delay moving forward on the plans until we make a decision. That would be fine with me on the next meeting's agenda.
Okay.
People are unhappy about the process. I understand why. If we're sitting on the, you know, outside of the special meeting, I'd probably feel much the same.
Mr. Dean, what's the timeliness of this portion of the project with regards to the bidding?
Staff is still finalizing the design, so we haven't advertised that project yet. We can bring it to the next council meeting for, as an agenda item.
Mr. Chair, you want to withdraw your roll or you want to stick with it?
Well, clarification, are we bringing that back after it's gone out for bid with numbers? Or are we just bringing it back to have the same discussion we're trying to have tonight on whether or not we're going to delay the project or not?
I would leave that direction to the council.
Could we even have bids back that soon?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, that answers the question.
President Bevins? Hang on, I got a question to Mr. O'Day, and he hasn't answered it yet. You want to keep going or you want to withdraw?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, Mr. Chesek?
That's fine, I'll make a motion when he's done.
Okay, the motion is withdrawn, the second has withdrawn.
Yep, I was seconding. But I would move that we bring this back for council discussion and just delay any further development of the plans and specs until we make a decision at our next meeting.
Okay. We have a motion by Chesek, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stangline, so now let's discuss that.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Do you have a date on that?
Yeah, the next meeting. Bring it back for discussion. And essentially, I'd look for the same motion, but just so, there is a recording of this, so anybody, if you wanted to get the full gist of what we discussed, I think that would be behoove you to check that out.
Thank you, Mr. O'Day.
I'll vote no, because I don't see the point in putting a stop to plans and specs. Whether we do it this year or next year, those plans and specs have to be done. The sooner we do those, I think, the better. And the more we know, the more informed we can be when we make that vote, whether we want to do it this year or next year. So I'll vote no.
Got it. Okay, any, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I agree with O'Day. I like bringing this back in two weeks, but I think we should have the engineering department continue to work on the project. If we're planning on having it happen in '24 or '25, the work needs to get done. We're already, we already have the momentum moving on it. I think, I think we should. I think Alderman O'Day brings up a good point.
Okay. Just so you know, based on what Mr. O'Day and Mr. Johnson said, we actually don't need a motion. It's all happening anyway. We can bring it back whenever we want to. We can bring it back every meeting. Okay? Just so you know. So the motion would become, if it gets defeated, there's no motion needed. Or the motion could be withdrawn, and we just let it play out with what we've already directed staff to do.
May I ask a question?
You may.
Okay, so if this motion fails, which is fine, and we do nothing, and the staff move forward as if there's nothing stopped, and do we go out for bids then? Because plans and specs are different than going out for bids.
I would say yes.
Okay.
Whether that happens in two weeks or not, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
So we have a motion to bring this back in two weeks and to stop moving forward on the project with plans and specs and bidding. Anyone else wish to speak on that motion? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to ask Tony to call a roll, because I think it might be close.
Stangline?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Chesek?
Yes.
O'Day?
No.
Stunick?
No.
Terry?
No.
Bevins?
No. That motion is defeated. Mr. O'Day? Thank you.
Motion to bring this back for discussion in two weeks.
Second.
Okay, you want to keep the bidding process going forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Say anything about it. We made a motion on that two weeks ago.
Okay. I'll allow this. Any discussion on this motion, on doing this conversation again in two weeks? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Thank you. I don't even remember where we are. Eight A. Eight A, new business.
New business.
We need something new. A conditional use permit for childcare. This would be Mr. Krambek.
Thank you, Mr. President. So TCC, a head start program, has submitted a request for a CUP to operate a commercial daycare facility at 418 Eighth Avenue Northeast and are requesting two classrooms with a total of 16 children. There will be three staff within each room. A playground area with a screened fence will be added to the south of the property as depicted in the site plan. The facility has ample parking area for drop off and pickup for the childcare facility, and it is at opposite times of church services. The commissioners had no concerns with the CUP. So with that, the commission recommends approval of the CUP for a childcare facility with two classrooms with a total of 16 children at 418 Eighth Avenue Northeast with the following conditions: approved inspections and reviews by the fire marshal and building official prior to operation, and a six-foot privacy fence slash will be earth toned in color and approved by the community development director. And I can answer any questions. There is, the applicant is present as well.
Any questions of staff on the conditional use permit for the childcare facility? Any questions of staff? Hearing none, is there any motion that like to be, Mr. Johnson?
I would move to approve the conditional use permit with the two presented conditions.
Second.
Thank you, and we have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stangline. Chairman Johnson?
I think this is great. We need childcare slots. Every spot counts, and this is 16 new spots in town for our families to use, so I'm really excited for it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Chesek is giving a nod. Thank you. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up is item 8B, consider a conditional use permit amendment for a 12-plex apartment at parcel 41040887. I imagine this is also, Mr. Krambek?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the purpose of this conditional use permit amendment request is to construct a residential 12-unit multifamily apartment consisting of two two-bedroom units as well as 10 studio apartment units. The original proposed 12-unit apartment that was approved by city council contained eight efficiency units, two two-bedroom units, as well as two three-bedroom units. The adjusted changed, the adjustment changed the floor plan as well as the exterior design of the building. There are elevation drawings that can be shown on the screen here. There is a difference in the siding type between the first and second floors, which is a requirement as part of the design standards section of the zoning code. The parking lot has been reduced in size to accommodate 14 parking spaces and two handicap spaces, which now meets the recently revised off-street parking ordinance to potentially reduce some of those large parking lots. So with that, the commission recommends approval of the conditional use permit amendment for the construction of 12-unit multifamily apartment at PID 41040887 with the condition that any additional lighting conforms to the outdoor lighting ordinance. And I can answer any questions. The applicant is also present.
Thank you, Mr. Krambek. Any questions of staff? Mr. Chesek?
Yes, Mr. Krambek, if I'm not mistaken, the garden will be on the street side of this project? Is that correct?
The garden will be, it'd be on the west side of the property, which is really a road that isn't used.
Oh, it isn't?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions of staff? Chairman Johnson?
So is the 12-unit apartment and the fitness center boarding house both part of this? Are they on the same parcel or?
They're on separate parcels. The applicant has applied for the next meeting for a revision on those as well, so this one is just considering one parcel.
This is just the one parcel with the one apartment?
That's correct.
That we're considering. Any other changes to the boarding house or the other apartment structure would...
Would have to go through planning commission.
They're still on the old conditional use permit.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff? Chairman O'Day?
So I read the memo. I see the comments from Commissioner Duval, which I definitely agree with pretty much everything he says. I'm wondering his comments about, I'm sorry, I'm trying to make this bigger so I can actually read it. The concern about whether it was too close to the front. I don't know how that was worded, and I can't find it right now. But I think you know what I'm talking about, James. He wanted a setback that was, he was concerned about...
Yeah, so the setback, the plan was adjusted to meet the setback requirements. Because of the adjustment configuration of the units, they had backed it off to, I believe, 47 feet from the front yard setback. The TN2 requirement requires 20-foot. So prior to the city council, staff made that recommendation that they have to meet that with the new plan, as well as not reducing any of the trees that were proposed in the landscape plan in the front yard. And they did meet that requirement.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody who hasn't spoke, before I let Mr. Johnson go a second time, Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm seeing a rectangle building that's a 12-plex, but I'm also seeing the one that kind of looks like spokes, like we approved last time. Is the new building the rectangle?
The new building is a rectangle, and the tab that I had marked, I just wanted planning, or the city council and planning commission to be aware of what the old one had looked like.
Okay, yeah, this looks better.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff? Hearing none, anybody wish to make a motion?
I will move that we follow the planning commission's recommendation and approve the conditional use permit.
Second. We have a motion by Stangline, a second by Chesek. Any comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Next up is a proposed ordinance 1565 on administrative subdivisions. This is also, Mr. Krambek?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the proposed ordinance will make it easier for staff and developers to understand the administrative subdivision ordinance. The objectives of this ordinance that were reviewed by planning commission were to create better definitions for boundary line adjustments as well as consolidations, allow for the adjustment or consolidations of three properties rather than two, also create base lot subdivisions for commercial buildings, which is in a lot of other subdivision ordinance from other communities, and also state a clear restriction on when a parcel can be subdivided in the future. Planning commission conducted a public hearing at their last meeting, and with that, the recommendation is to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1565 and to dispense with the actual reading. And note, a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous.
Any questions of staff on proposed ordinance 1565? Hearing none, we're looking for a motion to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1565. So move. Motion by Chesek, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stangline. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And next up is item 8D, consideration of a joint workshop with planning commission for short-term rental ordinance. Mr. Krambek, anything you'd like to add to this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the planning commission considered the recommendation provided by city council at their last meeting and did come up with some consensus, but didn't make any directions to staff other than to consider a joint workshop. Some of those discussions were removing the cap limits of an individual property owner that previously was no more than one VDU in the city or short-term rental, increase the cap from 20 to 40. Also, staff did bring up a recommendation to potentially allow two per, two short-term rental units instead of one per multifamily building. This would remove the need to grandfather any existing properties in from the short-term municipal cap section. So that'd be a potential as well. Planning commission continued to have concerns about opening the town center in Main Street District, as this is where there's a number of short-term, or number of workforce housing units. So this is something that planning commission would like to further discuss. After the discussion at planning commission, they directed staff to ask city council for a joint workshop. Commission members could be potentially available after 7:00 PM on Mondays or 6:00 PM on Wednesdays. Staff did include a couple of weeks as options. It would both be off weeks for council as well as planning commission, which would be March 11th through the 15th. As a note, that is spring break week, or March 25th through March 29th. I can answer any questions from there.
Do we have any questions of staff on the proposed joint planning workshop on short-term rentals? Bye.
That was my question.
Okay.
That was my question.
I like that question. I can't answer that one.
Mr. President, if I could take a stab at that?
Okay.
I'm not staff, but I...
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah. So I am the liaison, and I think that we, the planning commission, in watching our council meetings, has seen different council members give different direction on what should be included to get this passed and what the particular hurdles are for individual council members. And I think that it would be, rather than going back and forth and back and forth, if we can sit down in a workshop setting, and this was my recommendation at the planning commission meeting, if we could sit down in a workshop setting and just figure out what we need in each point and what we can come to an agreement on, on each point, I think it would be valuable, and I think then we would have this pinned up.
Does that answer your question?
It's an answer.
It's an answer. Any other questions or comments of staff or our liaison?
President Bevins?
Mr. Chesek?
So if we meet and we go through the processes, council members Stangline identified, would that just go back to the planning and zoning then to make a recommendation back to us?
According to our attorney, it must.
Okay.
At the last meeting, because I didn't want it to go back last time.
But could that particular workshop be counted as that particular going back to the planning commission? I guess is my question.
Mr. Krambek seems to be able to answer that.
The public hearing would have to be conducted at the planning commission meeting.
Thank you.
Really? It couldn't be here?
You can add one.
Okay, we can add one.
So an additional one could be, you know, potentially added, but maybe attorney-level can add to it.
You have multiple public hearings.
We can have multiple public hearings, but there is one required at the planning commission.
Again?
If there's substantial changes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I just think if there are major concerns by any council members, council members can easily send an email to any or all of the commissioners to give them their thoughts on this. Ultimately, it's their decision to make a recommendation in whether or not...
They did.
They did, they did.
Three times.
Well, they did, and then they made the same recommendation.
Well.
I understand the idea of having the workshop. It just seems like an issue that, we're talking about a handful of numbers here. It seems like a little bit too much to get through a smaller issue, but maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I'm wrong.
Chairman Johnson?
Nope.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. All right.
Let's have a meeting so they can yell at us.
Chairman O'Day?
If it takes a workshop to get through this and then we don't have to visit it again, then I'm fine with it. It's an extra half hour to an hour of being in this room. That's okay. Maybe we can bring some sandwiches.
See? Okay. We don't have a motion, so we're not speaking towards anything. We're just asking for questions of staff, not giving testimony on a motion that doesn't exist.
Oh, I'm just giving my opinion on the agenda item.
Go on to the front steps. Mr. Stunick?
I'm going to speak. Hold on. Hold your breath. I tend to agree with the mayor and Mr. O'Day. It seems like the meeting is just to have a meeting to kind of air out stuff. They make recommendations, should come to us. If we're not comfortable with the recommendation, it goes back. To have a meeting just to say to have a meeting, I don't know what we're going to accomplish.
Well...
My opinion, and I might be wrong.
Maybe a change would be made, but so far it hasn't been. Okay, let's see if anybody wants to make a motion on the workshop.
I will move that we hold a joint workshop on Monday, March 11th at 7:00 PM?
Six.
Six, I will amend it to 6:00 PM.
All right, we have a motion to meet with planning and zoning regarding short-term rentals on March 11th at 6:00 PM in this room. Is there a second? Second. We have a second by Chesek. Now we can discuss the motion, Mr. O'Day?
Yeah, like I said, I'm okay with it if that's what it takes to get this thing done.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesek?
For Mr. O'Day's benefit, if we have a workshop, it's still going to come back to us, so we'll still have to...
I understand.
Okay. Well, I'm going to vote against it, because I think we could vote right now. We have everybody here, and I know how six of us are going to vote, because we voted the same way three times in a row. So I would bet, now that we have seven here, we could probably make this out. So I don't know that a workshop's necessary. We've sent it back three times, and three times it's come back exactly the same. So I don't know that we need a workshop. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Tony, you want to call a roll on this one, just to make her fair?
Can you restate what we're voting on?
We're voting on a workshop with planning and zoning to discuss short-term rentals, March 11th, 6:00 PM.
Oh, yes or no? Okay.
Yep, yes to the workshop.
Stangline?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Chesek?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
No.
Terry? Bevins?
No, motion fails. Okay? Okay? Anybody else want to try this? I don't think it was a time and date problem, but just in case. I'm going to share something with you. Mr. Krambek, if we do nothing, you still have to get a rental license, yes?
Still have to get a rental license, still have to get an interim use permit with it. There's just no caps.
Got it. And that renews every year?
At this time, not all of them would renew every year, and there are still a couple of them that are grandfathered in from not having an interim use permit.
Okay. But that would be the one thing that we all seem to agree on, was the one year. Mr. Langel, if we need to add that right now to our process of the one-year renewal, does that have to go back to planning? Is that a zoning thing?
It is part of the zoning ordinance. You could direct staff to present that ordinance to planning commission, hold the public hearing, and then they can make a recommendation based on that.
Okay, seemed to be the one thing we all agreed. Somebody wanted to make that motion, you could, or any other motion. At this point, the discussion is the workshop, and that's been voted on. Okay, we're going to move on. Next up is the public forum. It is 8:16. This is time to open the public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. We'd like to have you keep it to three to five minutes. Again, if you're online, star three will indicate to us that you'd like to speak, and then when we acknowledge you, star six will unmute you. So you won't be expected to state your name and your home address. Anybody who wishes to address the council, now is your time on things that are not on the agenda this evening. I'll ask a second time. I'll ask a third and final time, and I will close the public forum at 8:17, and we'll go to staff reports. We'll start off to my right with the fire chief.
Nothing to report.
Police chief?
Nothing to report.
Anything from the finance department?
Just a reminder that tomorrow is the presidential nomination primary election. Polling locations in the city of Brainerd will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Mr. President, let me ask a question on that.
Yes.
Is there a polling location in Ward 3, precinct 3, or is that at the precinct 2 location?
It's combined Ward 3, or precinct 3, Ward 3P3 is combined with Ward 3P2. Yes, same location. Yes, same location.
Does that answer your question, Jeff?
Thank you.
Thank you, let's jump online to Eric Sharpetier from the HRA.
Yes, Mr. President, just one quick update, uh, last meeting, I did inform you that the Crowe County HRA has approved some funding for the project 805 Laurel. Uh, coupling with that, we've got, uh, the developer that would be then applying for some funding through the Minnesota Housing, Workforce Housing Development Program. The applicant actually would be the city of Brainerd, so I'm just introducing this now to the council, uh, that an upcoming meeting sometime between now and, uh, your middle of April meeting, we'll be bringing that forward to see if there's support from the council to allow the city to apply for that workforce housing development program on behalf of DW Jones. Uh, and just really briefly, that program is a, a three-year deferred loan and forgivable at 0% interest. So just looking forward to bringing that forward at a upcoming council meeting.
Thank you, Eric. Jesse Dean, City Engineer, Public Works Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, just two quick ones. Uh, so we did receive an update from MINDOT that our bus that we ordered in 2022 uh, is expected to be built this year in 2024, uh, but due to the increase in costs on the bus since 2022, uh, our local share is going to be up from what we expected, uh, we were thinking it was 11,007.55. It's going to be a little over 14,000, so we're going to bring that as an item on the next agenda. Um, but it would still be reflective of the 10% cost on that bus. Um, and then street maintenance staff, uh, this week is going to be working on assisting with the primaries as well as helping replace the old fence around Mill, uh, Millfield. Uh, but the following week is their plan to start, uh, street sweeping. Uh, so our spring street sweeping is going to hopefully, uh, start on next week, a few weeks ahead of schedule.
Thank you. Mr. Krabec, Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, just one item, uh, at the planning commission meeting, also began, uh, initial discussions on a potential cannabis dispensary ordinance. Uh, a couple of items to consider are which zoning district should be allowed in, a, a lot of the discussion from the last meeting centered around the TN2 district. Um, also, some of the discussion required, should there be a certain distance from schools, um, that they're required to be from? Uh, also, city council will have to consider how many they would like to allow in the city and, uh, if they would like to charge a registration fee as well, so this will be an upcoming item for safety in public works or potentially PNF. So just wanted to update council on that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Langill from the Attorney's Office? HR Director Schubert? And our brand spanking new, hasn't put in a, well, yeah, you got a full weekend. Mr. Nick Broyles, thank you for joining us, our new city administrator, anything to report?
I do, thank you, Mr. President, yes, week two of my tenure, I've just met some fantastic people, I'm looking forward to, uh, meeting more people, building those relationships and serving this community, so thank you for the opportunity.
Doing you and me, who's your favorite so far? I'm just kidding, just kidding, don't say it.
My mic's not working.
Okay, yeah, that happens a lot and it should happen more often, actually. All right. Next up, the Honorable Mayor Dave Bedo.
Good Lord. So I, a-as you know, am the, uh, liaison to the park board, which is a fun gig to have. It was a lot of fun, this last meeting, because I don't know if you know or not, but water skiing is a spicy ordeal in the city of Brainerd. Uh, we had full chambers, full chambers, we had full chambers downstairs. A lot of passionate people that have passionate feelings about water skiing. I want to thank everyone that came to that meeting for being cordial. I will say that I did not think it was going to be very productive. It was very productive. I think that people were polite, came forward with good ideas. I think that the park board has, uh, a good basis to build a decision on. And I think the council should be aware that, you know, there are people in this area that are very passionate about water skiing.
Why are you looking at me?
Because I know, you know, you know, there are people that are passionate about water skiing.
I'm passionate about water.
North Log is almost open, I can go there and practice.
But I just, I, I do just want to thank the public for coming forward. I will say this, I thought about you, Kelly, in that, I will say that, uh, to quote Councilman, Council President Bevins, uh, "Some people like to do their business in the public, some people like to do them online on Facebook. I would recommend do your business, uh, in person, not online on Facebook, however, to each their own." But I will just say, it went very well and I want to thank everyone that was involved in that process. And hopefully now, at our next park board meeting, we should be able to come to some kind of, uh, agreement and conclusion to that process. And I look forward to reporting on that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, after tonight, are you, uh, still recommending water tower tattoos?
Well, it, now that I find out we have to get them pre-approved by Jeff Chesak.
Be happy to do that.
I gotta make sure we're, we're being, being careful with those tattoos.
Bless you. Item 12, council committee reports, Mr. Chesak, would you start us off, please?
I'd be happy to. Um, kind of piggybacking on what I said earlier, um, there, there's been a culture that's developed over the years and, and it's not good. And we want to change that. We, we're the leaders of the city, we're elected to be responsible to our city. And that means our city, people living here and especially our staff. So i-if it means anything at all to anybody listening to me, comments that have been made that are derogatory in nature, criticizing, chastising, you name it, I, I, that, that, that is not how all of us feel. And so it's primarily to public utilities, when things are said that you take offense to, I completely understand. And just so you know, um, it's something that we all need to work on. And if we can't monitor ourselves and challenge each other, we are not doing our jobs. And that's what I'm doing now. I'm challenging all of us to see that this behavior is ended and sooner than later. Thank you, Mr. Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Tiffany Stangline?
Um, we had our Region 5 meeting, uh, and had a presentation, uh, from Candace Zimmerman on the Poop to Power project. Um, so hold tight, they're working on grants for that. Sounds like great things are going to be coming out of the wastewater treatment plant.
What to power?
Poop. Poop to power, Jeff.
Lot of methane in there.
Yes.
Remind me to not let Tiffany speak, don't you? Chairman O'Day?
I I'm speechless right now because I
Back in the
Since the day I saw the eternal flame from Brainerd and Baxter combining together as one, I always thought we should use that in a positive way and it sounds like we are now.
We're, we're getting there.
This is a great day, thank you for that, Tiffany. All I wanted to say before that was, uh, welcome to Nick Broyles, it's, it's been a week. Um, it seems like there's a lot going on right now, it's a busy time of year. Might as well just jump right in the fire and, and have fun with it, so, thank you, uh, I hope you're enjoying it. Uh, thank you to everybody who came from BPU tonight. Uh, improving communication, as always, we're, we're trying to do that, so, um, I think it was productive and thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just a reminder, the skating rink at Gregory Park is still open, but be careful. Roller skates. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, the, uh, HRA board met last week and set some of our budget priorities for the year and we have, I don't know, $100,000, $150,000 of excess fund balance, so we're on the lookout for blighted properties, abandoned properties, half burned down properties, of which there are plenty of in this town. We're going to try and acquire and tear down a couple this year. That's all I got.
Thank you. Karen Terry?
Uh, library board met and made an adjustment or an amendment to our bylaws to allow for Mary Cope to serve on the KRLS, I think I got that acronym right, library board, um, for us, so, thank you to Mary for, um, volunteering to do that through the end of the year. Appreciate it very much. I didn't know when that was coming, so
We'll put it on next week, two weeks' agenda, so it could be on the agenda.
Is that, okay.
I like that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else, Carol?
No, sir.
All right, Mr. Stunick, chief?
I do have. Last week, we had a tragedy in Burnsville. We had a very good delegation of people, police and fire from Brainerd, go down and support that, so I want to thank them very much.
Anything else, chief?
That's it.
All right, so would you like to make a motion to adjourn to closed session per Minnesota statute 13D.05, subdivision 3C3, to discuss the purchase of the Roberts property?
That would be a motion for me.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? We're taking a five-minute recess to come back and close session, so if you're not supposed to be here, it's time to go.